While the candidates take their way up here, first I want to say thank you so much for coming out tonight to our four over the Maken County Commissioners. My name is Brittany Lofthouse. I own and operate the Southern Scoop News, which is online. And for over the last decade, I've operated through the Maken County News. When the League of Women Voters disbanded many, many years ago, and we needed a local forum so we could meet candidates and learn about them, somehow I find myself doing it every time. Boy, if nobody else did, I guess I'm flinching for punishment, but I appreciate you guys being here. I think it's super important to have an opportunity, not just to meet these guys or read about them in the newspaper, but to ask them questions, put them on the spot, and have them not have time to polish an answer, not have time to think of the perfect response, and just to have to tell you what they think right then. And so with that being said, they've not, nobody in this room knows the questions that I'm going to ask. Well, I just texted to my husband so I can get him on my phone, but I doubt he's ready.
No.
It was three seconds ago before I stood up here. So the way that's going to go is all of the candidates are going to be asked the same questions. They're going to start with five minutes, they'll introduce themselves in that five minutes, and then answer the first question. And then after that, I originally was going to say three minutes for a response. I'm going to try to keep it to two minutes with Grace Perry to go over, because I couldn't narrow it down past seven questions. And if we go too much longer than that, we'd be here for quite a while tonight. So we'll try, we'll do two minutes, and you'll have the alarm on my phone will beep, but don't think you just have to stop talking right then, because it should have been three minutes, but I couldn't narrow it down. I do want to start because our senator is here, Senator Kevin Corbin, so I do want to ask him to come up and just kind of give you guys a very brief state legislature, because he's here and I'm going to take advantage of that. So we'll have to give him just a few minutes to say that.
Thank you. All right.
Yes.
Danny, how y'all doing?
Great.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming out and showing me the interest in these guys running for county commissioner, and I want to sincerely commend these guys. I can honestly say I'm really good friends with everybody sitting here. Well, friends and brother-in-law with one, but good friends, and you can vote for two. You know, you can vote for two in the Franklin C, your district two. So you've got some good choices. And you know, one blessing is you've got good people running for county commissioner. If you don't know me, I'm Kevin Corbin, I'm your state senator. I represent Haywood, Jackson-Swain, let's see, Maken, Clay, Graham, and Cherokee County, and the Eastern Band of Cherokees.
And now Transylvania.
Ma'am?
And now Transylvania.
And now Transylvania County was added to my district, so I tell people I have eight counties in the country that I represent, so kind of, I'm the only senator that represents a country, Eastern Band. Anyway, thank you guys for running, thank you for putting yourself out there. You know I served on the school board, and then I've served a couple of terms as a county commissioner. And I know what it's like, you put yourself out there, make yourself available for people to ask you questions, and it's a service of love, and I appreciate every one of you for running, so I hope you guys do too. Very quickly, Brittany mentioned, I didn't know I was going to do this, I didn't bring any notes, but we, of course, we're in the middle of the budget that we passed, this last budget that we passed, and we did pass it 25.9 billion, that's with a B. And going from county commissioner to state, I had to learn how to do a budget. All you need to do is add three zeros to it, it works the same way. But it's a lot of money. I had to figure out, a billion, it's hard to get my head around, a billion dollars is a thousand million dollars. So that's a lot of money, and it's your money, it's tax money. And so we try to be very responsible with that. We were able to do several things in this last budget. First of all, we got a budget, we did a budget, and we're able to get Governor Cooper to sign it, thank God, somebody will say amen right there.
Amen.
So we have a budget. We're able to give all state employees at least a thousand dollar bonus. School teachers got, most of them got $2,800 bonus. All state employees, including teachers, got a 5% raise over two years, 2.5% now, retroactive till last July, and 2.5% come this July, a couple of months. So nice raises for all our employees. We did something nice for everybody. We lowered taxes. Can you say it in there?
Amen.
If it were up to me, I think we ought to do away with income tax. Income tax is an unfair tax, and we're getting there. When I got down there six years ago in the House, our income tax rate was 7%, remember that, 7%? We've been lowering it every time we passed a budget. It's now 3.99. So we're on the way from 7 to 3.99 this year. The other thing we did was raise the standard deduction. So if, you know what that is? If you're a couple, the first 25,500 that you make is not taxed, no tax on that. So if you make 25,500, that's all you make, you pay zero income tax in North Carolina. If you make 100,000, you subtract 25,5 from that, you only pay tax on the amount over that. So we increased the standard deduction. I think when I got down there, it was about 12,000, 13,000, it's now 25,500. So we did that to put more money in your pocket. Another thing we did, which I was very much for, we lowered the corporate tax rate. Now, I'll tell you, that was controversial, some of our contractors said, oh, you're lowering taxes for the rich. Let me tell you something, folks, I've been in business all my life, and I know most of you have too, you understand how it works. Corporations don't pay taxes. You pay for things that the corporation sells, and they charge you more so they can pay their taxes. So when we lowered the corporate tax rate, we've done that the last couple of budgets, people said, oh, you're going to bankrupt the state, you're lowering the personal income tax, you're going to bankrupt the state. Guess what? Even with COVID, we have a surplus. And we're getting ready to hear from the budget office here in just a couple of weeks, we've got another surplus for this year. So we lowered taxes, have a surplus, we're able to give folks bonuses, put more money back in your pocket, and that is a good thing. Anyway, a lot of things that I could talk about, but I just thank you for letting me represent you. I do not have a primary. I've got a general election opponent in November, a young lady that's filed as a Democrat. I appreciate her willingness to run as well, just like these guys. So I'm not going to say a lot more. These guys have a primary, and you're interested in hearing them. I'd be glad to take any questions, if you've got time for that. If not, I would just thank you for being here. So, any questions?
We thank you wrong.
Ma'am?
We just thank you wrong.
Well, thank you, Hazel, I appreciate that. Well, thank you, guys, God bless. Thank you for your interest in Lady Kim.
All right, thank you, Senator Corbin. So I'm going to ask the first question, and the first question will be five minutes to answer. So that's going to give you time to introduce yourself. I know that they've probably, we've probably seen what you posted on Facebook, we're well into the election at this point, they've probably read about your profiles in the newspaper. So best always to be able to introduce yourself in case they have not done that, and then you can go into answering the question. I'm happy to repeat the question as we go as well, in case it gets lost. And if I haven't already told you individually, the first question will go to Majad, the second question will go to Danny, so everybody will get a turn to answer the start by answer, and then be able to follow up after everybody, just to make it as fair as possible. I did seven questions, because there were seven candidates. Mr. Antoine was unable, he originally was going to be here, and then he had a family emergency come up, so he didn't have to be elsewhere tonight, and he sends his regrets for that, but he would have been here if he could have been. So there is another candidate. I had talked about this before, on Tuesday night at our other forum, so I'm just going to take a second to do it again. When you're voting in the Maken County Board of Commissioners race, you're going to be voting on District One and District Two. When you vote for District One, you're going to pick one candidate out of the two that are on the ballot. When you're voting in District Two, you're going to be picking two candidates on the ballot. If you're voting in the Republican primaries, the top two vote-getters in the primary right now on May 17th will be sent to the November ballot, and then they will appear on the November ballot to go against the two Democrats that are going to be on the November ballot. A lot of people ask me, why don't they have a primary? Why aren't we voting for Democrats? Why do they just get to go to November? It's because there's two seats open in District Two. And so that seat could very well end up being two Republicans, or that seat could be two Democrats. But it can't be three Republicans, and it can't be three Democrats. So had there only been two people filed for District Two, they would go straight to November, and they wouldn't need a primary. But because there's more than that, which we are fortunate to have so many people interested in serving on that board, the top two vote-getters will then go on to November.
Ms. Lofthouse, could you go ahead and let everybody know that it is not five districts in everybody in Maken?
Absolutely. So while we have two districts, which is why they're not separated that way up here, so while they can only run based on District One or District Two, the county at large votes on them. So the way I explain that to people is, even though Senator Corbin represents us in Senate District 50, the decisions he makes is for the entire state. So while they might represent District One or District Two, which is specific areas of the county, the decisions they make is Maken County at large, which is why they're voted on at large. So it doesn't matter where you live, you'll vote, you'll have everybody on the ballot if you pull a Republican ballot. There is also an unaffiliated candidate that has tried to get on the ballot, so that might end up being on the ballot in November, but these are the candidates that we're looking at now. For further clarification, we have Mr. Sherrill and Mr. Willis stand up, just for clarification. These are your two candidates for District One. So District One is, I'll never write it down, so I didn't miss it because I got it wrong on Tuesday. It is Highlands, El J, Flats, and Sugar Fork. So that's the areas of the county that District One will represent. And then, thank you guys, thank you gentlemen. Pardon?
It's scaling.
It's Flats is what it's called, but it's scaling. And then the rest of the gentlemen are off for Franklin, the Franklin area. There is a District Three, but they're not on the ballot this time, and that's Brantown, Nana Millen. So we, you can introduce yourself, and then answer the first question. The first question, we're starting big right off the game. I don't run for election, and that gives us every year, and I've done it for a decade, and I still am probably more nervous than they are. So today, not today, it was actually May 3rd, but the news came out today that Maken County schools found out that they did not receive a grant from the North Carolina Education Lottery for school construction. While that pot of funding in general is pretty difficult to tap into, there were 2.7 billion dollars in request, and there was only 400 million dollars available for the entire state, which is 115 school districts. One of the reasons, Senator Corbin did an interview with WLOS, and one of the reasons that he gave for why Maken County, it reduced Maken County's chances of being eligible for that grant, is because of Maken County's low tax rate. Maken County has one of the lowest tax rates in the state. We used to have the lowest until a couple of years ago, and we still have one of the top five lowest. Compared to our demographic, which includes average income and home values, having a low tax rate and having a high median income and a high home value rate is disproportionate when we're looking at grants like the North Carolina Education Lottery. So what are your thoughts on the county's current tax rate, and any challenges or benefits that it may present? And we'll start with Mr. Sherrill, right off the game.
Good evening, guys. I'm John Sherrill, candidate for District One, Maken County Commissioner. I'm a lifelong conservative Republican. I'm a business owner in Maken County. I have two businesses, Sherrill Motors and Auto, and JJ Lawn and Landscape Services in Highlands. One thing that I would like to say, all you people, if you've read the newspaper, Franklin Press last week, that's exactly who I am and what I stand for. So I'm not going to stand up here, I've been multiple times talking about these same things, but if you look at my card right here, it says low taxes, period, right? Senator Corbin, you just talked about how you guys lowered taxes in the state of North Carolina.
Yes, sir.
And everybody in here applauded. I'm bringing that same leadership to Maken County. Folks, I'm not against moving Maken County forward, but I am, in my mind, when people have to choose whether they can pay for their medicine, or we can build a new school, I don't think that's moving Maken County forward. I've been questioned out here, folks, I've been questioned, how am I going to have time for all of this? Any of you that has been down at the Robert C. Carpenter Center since early voting started, you would have seen my face down there, from 7:00 in the morning until at least 7:45 every night since it's open. I'm committed to this, folks. This is dear to my heart. Maken County is my home. I love Maken County. I will continue to live in Maken County. The whole thing about these capital improvement projects, with the school, new jail, new courthouse, new sheriff's department, new senior services, we're talking about a half a billion dollars. I'm not going to tell you I'm for or against it, because it's not my decision, I'm only one of 34, 35,000 people in this county. If I'm sitting on that board, I'm still just one of 34, 35,000 people in this county. I would want to know, the Bible tells us, only a fool would build something without knowing what it's going to cost, and how we're going to pay for it. That's my question. Tell me the true need, the need for a new school. Let's research it. Is that our only option? Or can we do something different? When the experts come in and tell me that, no, we've got to have a new school, okay, what's it going to cost, and how we're going to pay for it? Sitting on that Board of Commissioners, I will make a motion, after everything, the steps is gone, I will make a motion that we put that on a referendum, and let the citizens of Maken County vote on it. That's our job as leadership, is not to shut the people out of decisions. Folks, it's not about John Sherrill, it's about us as the people. I am not for higher taxes. Folks, they put $6 million last year along in the fund balance, that is over taxation. I am for taxing you for what we need to run an effective and efficient government. I am not going to vote to overtax you. And if you research it, I had a lady shoot me out the other day on a phone message, and I talked to her for 45 minutes. She came down there yesterday to thank me for the honest answers that I gave her, and she said, at first she told me there's no way in the world she could coax me. Yesterday, that lady come down here, I challenged her to research what I told her.
Scared me. Yes, sir.
She came down there, and she said, I'm voting for you, Mr. Sherrill. Thank you for being honest and transparent with us. Thank you, guys.
That's what that noise sounds like, sorry, scared myself.
It seems like it's been a while since you read that question.
Sorry.
Make sure I get the meetup interview.
Yeah, after you introduce yourself, I'm happy to reread it again.
I appreciate that. Good evening, folks, I'm Daniel Reitmeyer, I'm running for District Two, County Commissioner. I'm from here, this is my hometown, accompanied by my incredible wife, Kim, who has been in my back pocket the whole way and supported me, so I appreciate her support. This is my home, grew up here, went to Franklin High School, graduated there, joined the Air Force, served for eight and a half years, served in the combat arena in Desert Storm, proud of my service. Any veterans tonight? Well, these two, anybody else? Gary? Thank you, guys, for your service, I appreciate that. That's the battle of our country. I've been asked why I did this, and it's simple to me. I love our county, this is our town, I want to be a part of moving our county forward, giving our citizens a good place to live, a place where they can make money, they can raise their kids, they don't have to move away. This can be their home too. I've seen so much exodus out of our family, people leaving for jobs, kids leaving for jobs, for nothing to do here, you name it. But we've got to make this place someplace that thrives, that people can live here and can make a living. Fair. I don't want to see our people leave. Sorry, it's emotional to me, I have a friendly, and I don't want to see it anymore. We've got to do something different. My campaign slogan, motto, has been a new vision, a new voice, and I want to be that, I want to be that for our citizens. Our job is to sit in that chair and say, all right, what our citizens want? We need to listen, and then we need to get a plan of action, and then we need to follow it through. There's things that have to be done in this county, we've been talking about, and talking about, and talking about, but they have to be done. Action is what happens. You've got to talk about those, you do, but informed action is what we have to do. We can't just sit on things. We've got to be progress and be in tune with our people, and be transparent. I know there's a sales tax referendum that's going to be on the ballot in November, and it's supposed to be earmarked for education. I'm glad, if you people need to vote on that. If you want that, and it passes, great. I think it should be a separate line item on our budget, and everything else should be that's earmarked for something, and not just stuck in that general fund. We need to be very clear to our citizens where the money is, that they're being taxed on, where it's going, and not just stuck somewhere, and us sitting in the seat going, well, we're taken care of. I believe we go take care of it, but I think black and white's better. I don't want to see black and white, you should be able to see white. I would appreciate it, folks, I will be there for you, day one, and I will work hard with anybody, I promise you that, always have, always been.
Maken County Schools found out this week that they didn't receive a grant from the North Carolina Education Lottery, or that pot of funding in general is really difficult to tap into. One of the reasons Senator Corbin gave for reducing Maken County's chances of getting that grant was the county's low tax rate compared to other demographics, like the average income and the home values in our county. What are your thoughts on the county's current tax rate and the challenges that it presents, or the benefits it presents?
I'll first just say, I'm disappointed we didn't get it. That lottery, I mean, I think it's a mixed bag. There's good things to it, that's a lot of money that it generates, and I think everyone should get a piece of it. It's the state lottery, it should be spread out evenly, I think. To have to put in for it and be denied, I don't find that fair. So that aside, at that point, our tax rate is low. I'm glad of that, it helps us in a lot of ways, and yet, the median income and house values are high. It does hurt us. We've got to find a way to find that balance. I'm not operating taxes, I don't like that idea, but I am also for giving you what you need, the services you need, that you deserve, and if that requires taxes, y'all tax it, taxes, they're not going to go away, they're not, but we have to be careful with them, and that is the way we generate income. I mean, county is a business, and our way of making money is through taxation. That's just the way the system works. So we need to be smart with that money, and absolutely do the very most with the very least that we have to charge to our citizens. So we've got to find ways, if the grants help come in, we look at other avenues. The lottery's not the only way that we can get money from places. We need to be proactive, and we need to be very active all the time, and not just sit still and go, well, we didn't get that grant, so too bad for us. No, where else? Who else do we talk to? And our job is to take care of you, and however that is, then that's up to us to do. You put me in that seat, and I'll have.
Good evening, I'm Richard Lightman. For the ones in here that don't know me, I spent 35 years in the PACS office, so this first question is real interesting. My opinion is probably going to be different than what you've heard to this point. But let me tell you the first thing, my dad was a Deion Green boy, grew up between Quantico, Virginia, and Jacksonville, North Carolina. I went to about 16 different schools. And if you look at my format, education is the most important thing that we can do, by far, to eliminate a lot of problems in this county, in this state, and in this country. We don't educate our children, then we'll have problems with social services, the law enforcement, and everybody after. Give you an example, I was the first one to invite family to graduate from college. My wife graduated from Western, my daughter graduated from there, my son, my son, the master's from there, my daughter's a master for College of Charleston and Citadel. You educate your children to be better, so that's number one we need to do, educate our children. But let's not forget, we have the largest elderly population in the state, one of the largest, it's grown in the West here. The elderly people come here, they need resources, doctors, medical facilities for recreation and things like that. We can't forget them, we need to provide for them. Law enforcement, everybody says the drugs is rampant, it is. Until we start solving other needs, until we give these children and these young people breathing, to believe in themselves, and believe that they can go forward, and get an education, get a job, provide resources for a job, then we're going to have problems. So let's get to the tax question. You know, I understand perfectly about this tax question. Out of 35 years, I've probably had in my office, or Maken County's the lowest tax rate in state. Everybody jumping up and down. The reason that is, we have a lot of second home people here. If you tell Derrick County, Kitty Hawk and all that, they've got a low tax rate, because they've got a lot of outside ownership. When you go to the state and they divvy up their money, the first thing that is said, and I've heard it for 35 years in Raleigh, is a building to pay. School buildings are the responsibility of the parents, the county. If we want school buildings to be vocational tech, we want them to have nice things, we want to replace a 75-year-old building that doesn't meet ADA, we have to pay for it somehow. Talking about the tax rate, people can't afford their medicine and that. Maken County and Longwood State have a program for the elderly, disabled, and low income that cuts that tax rate in half. And the reason it adjusts every few years is because when I was president of the State Tax Association, we got the state legislators to pass it, so it goes up with inflation, so you don't get stoked. So there is that. Second, I have not talked to a person yet that would not pay the $20 a month to build a school. That's part of about what you're talking with, if you build a school in a reasonable budget, and you also pass the sales tax. And you can say about the sales tax, go to Jackson County, go to Haywood County, go to Asheville, go anywhere, you're going to be paying that because they've already passed it. A lot of people say, let's be like Rayburn County and have a school like that for our kids. Rayburn County, the school board has the power of the tax. North Carolina, you don't have that power. So for that low tax rate, you get the sheriffs, you get the schools, you get the recreation, you get this library, you get social services, you get fire, that's a deal. So on the tax rate, we can afford a little bit extra to get things done. We've been putting off our high school, matter of fact. Mr. Corbin over there, he was chairman of the school board, he appointed me and Ken Stonebreaker to a committee, look at schools, before we built the first school. We sat in there, Ken Stonebreaker and I, had nothing to do with education. After we listened to everybody, we said, we need to build a new high school, this 25 years ago. And the administrator said, huh, what? What are we going to do with facilities? We said, move the middle grade into the high school, middle grade becomes intermediate. After we get to high school, we see about the outlined schools. They said, that's $26 million. We spent $60 million, we're back to the $75 million our high school. You pay a little bit now, it goes a long way in the future.
Good evening, folks. I'm so glad to see all of you here tonight. My name is Don Wallace, and I am running for Maken County Commissioner and Mr. Lofthouse. I've been married to my wife, Robin, for 42 years. I have two adult children, Amber Wright, who is a lieutenant with the Maken County Sheriff's Office, she works crimes against children. My son is an electrician here in Maken County. We have been blessed with four grandchildren, and they're my biggest reason for running for county commissioner. I started my career in the late 80s as a volunteer firefighter. I have over 30 years of public service, part of that being a volunteer firefighter, which led me to becoming the Maken County Fire Marshal in the 90s. I was fortunate enough that I went to basic law enforcement training, and was hired on by Sheriff Dan Homer Holbrooks in the late 90s. I stayed with the Maken County Sheriff's Office until recently last year, when I retired as a lieutenant of Criminal Investigations Unit. So I've been very blessed to be able to protect and serve the citizens of Maken County. I wish to continue that trade as well. My number one priority is the education and safety of our children. We have to start looking at these facilities that are outdated, we need to get them replaced. We can't have our children there, exposed to mold and things of this nature in the school system. of this nature in the school system. One thing about the North Carolina Education Lottery, I had a conversation when I found out this morning that we didn't get the grant or for the money for the high school, I called Senator Corbin this morning. And I asked him, I said, what was the reason for us not getting the grant? Is there a reason behind it? Well, there were 76 schools that had applied for grants through the North Carolina Education Lottery. That sum came up to $2.5 billion, I believe it was. So the way that is calculated and formulated itself was basically because of our tax base being so high and our interest rate, our, not interest rate, but our tax rate being low, in that formula itself kind of disqualified us. They're thinking at the state level was basically, we can afford the school and we can afford to pay them. Well, I have news for you folks. Senator Corbin and Representative Carl Palaspi are going to try to get that changed. Because it's really unfair, you know? Just because we have a low tax rate, we shouldn't be punished. Those funds are there, and they're there for a purpose. And that is to build this high school. It's not a dead deal. There's a new budget cycle that's coming up very shortly. And we can reapply for that loan. So hopefully, we can get that loan, or at least a good percentage of that loan, so we don't have to raise taxes. I don't want to raise taxes any more than anyone else in this room. I want a fixed income, just like most of you. So therefore, we're going to look at every option possible before we have to raise taxes to build a school. But first, we've got to have a plan. We've got to see how much the school is going to cost us. Is it beneficial to build here at the present location, or do we need to move it to another location? There are a lot of questions that you still need to be asked before we move forward. I think my experience and leadership, being in public service, will lend me a chance to share that knowledge with my fellow commissioners, and we can move forward. My name is Don Wallace. Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming out here. Kalisco's talking about his loss of his guys. Talking about his right. Our tax rate is low. We've got big houses, money houses up in Highland that throws us off on a lot of stuff. They think for a low rate, we won't be able to pay this long, from what I've understood. And I've been talking. I don't go listening to everybody. I go straight to the people in the source. We got a high school that's got eight or nine buildings on my track. What I understand, they just had architecture. And half of them buildings is not available to renovate. They want to tear them down. That's first hand architecture. Tear them down, put all the buildings in one location, and you'll save you money. We start investing, trying to renovate, we're going to move our kids around and around and around. What are they going to learn? They're going to learn that if we can start renovating, we put them here, put them there. I know tax money is a lot of people don't want to pay, come up with, whatever. And I'm not for a tax raise. I'm for us figuring it out. Get a price, get the right people to hold this, us building. Get a school where we know what, like John said, know where your money's going. People does make to know where their money's going. We need a contract price that's solid, that we get quality work, not cheap work, that we can build a school for 1,200 kids, build it for, hopefully, the last, at least 50 years. That's my goal. Transparency. Build a school. Make sure the people in Macon County took care of our kids, our older folks, and just people in general. Be transparent. County commissioners need to be transparent, period. Show what their tax money is going. People understands that. They see it's going to the help of everybody and individual of Macon County to do the right thing. Don't be afraid to be a voice and come up there and talk to the county commissioners. Ask questions. I'm a true fact. Ask questions. Don't matter who's got the idea. Go to them, question them, and let them answer the questions. Perfect example. I've been studying on this referendum tax. Now come to conclusion. We're getting, we've lost on the debt. Six counties out of seven counties voted for it. You know why they voted for it? How do you bring up one penny, quarter percent? How do you bring it up? You're already getting charged. Already found it out. We already getting charged. The money's going to the state. So think about it. You're going to get $1.2 million back, which we're already giving to other counties around us. They're getting the benefit of our money. So I've thought about it. I was against it at first, but it brought my attention. There ain't no way you can come up with a quarter percent tax. It's already there. Because you're going to pay it. You paid $1.07. If you give something, most times it's $1.07. That quarter cent's already included. We're losing on getting this money back here in Macon County on capital gain. It's, everything's got to be looked at. It's your money. Be vocal about where you put your money. And see where it's going. And if you see where your money's going, and it's the right place, I'm sure you'll do whatever it is to get what you need to come to Macon County. I'm looking in right now. I'm talking to some people. And I'm trying to get started. Looking at bringing doctors in, primary doctors, orthopedics. And then, what I understand, maybe we can get it into town, in city limits. That's a big push. We need doctors here. Our doctors is left here. And my own mom, she's got a lot of health problems. I'd like to come here and be able to go to Franklin for some instead of traveling wine where I asked for somewhere else. But we, our county has got a lot of elderly people in here. We need to take care of. Like we need to take care of our kids. Like we need to take care of our drug problem. And build a better, build a better program to take care of the drugs. And you got candidates in here and around that's willing to readjust and make sure this job gets done. And if you've got a question, they got cell phones. Call them. Ask them. Greg Jones, District Two. Love to have you both. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Shields. This is my request to you. I'd like to run for the county commissioner for a third term. I've now served on the county commissioner for seven and a half years. We've talked a little bit about the schools here. A year ago, at the end of our budget session, the county commissioners gave our county manager okay to go ahead and seek an architect, RFQs. We spent last summer working through that process. And actually, we did that, we divided it down into what we call the Facilities Committee. I work with the school board. That's one of my liaisons. In any capacity, I'm working for the Board of Education. And this is part of that liaison piece. Anyway, when we got to, through the process last year, we went to, we found a architect firm we feel like we could do well with. And it's funny, we're talking about this today. We just had the meeting yesterday. And when you talk about we lost the grant, that was due to be yesterday. And my understanding is they were going to try to find out where we landed on that sheet. And where we land on that sheet, that's where it starts next year. And you don't, it doesn't switch around. So we're going to put our name back in the hat. We're talking about the quarter cent sales tax. I can assure you, we're one of the seven counties, Haywood West. The other six have that quarter cent sales tax. I've had people from each county say, when you're ready to talk about this, we'll come and we'll have an assembly. We'll meet with the people in Macon County and tell them what that quarter cent has done to our counties. And I promise you that I will do that. I'm not going to promise you something at this time because it's not all, we don't have all the information. I do not have that committee at this time. But they've assured me that when we start towards the general election, we will have a conference about that. And the public will be invited. I guess one thing, the thing that I listen to here, and there's a lot of truth to what they're saying. I'm just trying to dissect a little bit on what the information we got yesterday. We are still going forward with the study, Franklin High School. The study yesterday concluded with the, to see what the schools, the campus, what buildings are on a 50-year lifespan. And so, we looked at the renovation that would have to have, that'd have to take place. And it's not a good story. It's a sad story about the infrastructure and those type of things. I heard some people talking about, we're looking for a site. I've been looking for this site for 20 years. We've been, ever, I've been 12, in the last two years, I've been to two sites, 12 sites here in Macon County. Once you put out, you're looking for 30 to 40 acres for a high school, you can't afford the property. It goes up. And another thing we have to think about, when you're talking about building a high school, it needs to stay centralized. We had the opportunity, that wasn't real, we had some land down towards Calwee. You don't even have an infrastructure going down Highway 28. And when you start putting 300 and some cars on that road at morning time, it's a disaster. Now I'm going to lead you into where I've been. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I finished in May of 69, came back and went to school. Been in education for 37 years. 29 of those years, I spent here in Macon County. 21 of those 29 years, I was the principal of Franklin High School. So I am familiar with the pros and cons of Franklin High School. We need a new school. That's a quick five minutes. We need a new school. And I must, let me say this. I will not leave for anything that we don't have to see what it is. You can't do it that way. So we're going through the renovation. We'll be going through the new part soon. And when all gets, all things get put in a package, we'll have a big meeting for that. Thank you very much.
So my second question is going to be about the sales tax referendum for the schools. But because the majority of the candidates touched on that, and so we can avoid some reticence, we're going to skip that question. We're going to switch it up a little bit. That's what you've got to do in a forum. So my second question, when we're going to start with Mr. Rat Meyer, is going to be littering along our roads, one of the number one complaints that many of our elected officials receive. However, if you go by the rules, picking up the tip of the trash is second for the responsibility of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, which is the response most of them get. However, as with most things, the county often has to end up picking up the state slack. No offense, Senator Corbin. So having to pick up the state slack. So what do you propose, if anything, can be done to address the litter on our roads on all of the county level? Mr.?
Hello, everybody.
You have, we're going to start with two minutes. Let's try to stick to that, so we don't run out of time.
Okay. So in my two minutes, I'm going to say quickly, my sister's here, and it's her birthday. So you're a bear, Stan.
Happy birthday, Dad.
I'm a teenager, I'm a little bit older. So proud of my sister. But I've actually talked about this a lot before I ever talked about running. I am so, I don't know, energized about littering. I just can't stand it. I'm a landscaper. So I love our environment. And I see litter on roadside, and I've stopped and picked it up. I just, I can't stand it. So I've always wondered, you see it on the places along, you know, maybe it's a state level thing, maybe it's a state level corrections, but why don't we put our prisoners out? They're in jail. They're sitting in our jails. Maybe there's things I'm not aware, but I would love to ask those questions. But we're paying for them to be in that jail and feeding them and whatever. They should do something productive. And yeah, so is the state's job. Everybody's to understand, we understand that. But there's people that could do that job and help Macon County out that, I guess for the most part, aren't doing a lot that I'm aware of, that they couldn't take them out and do that. Is it tasking officers? I know Nick and Play are both here. Maybe put more on our sheriff's office. Again, that's something that should be discussed. We, I think we, maybe in our seats, maybe we come up with ideas to, you know, form groups, form communities, reach out to our citizens and say, hey, don't you want to beautify your county? Don't you want to make it? Go to our community club meetings. When they have them, find out if they are attending. Bring that up and try to energize people and say, look, this is where you live. And if we want to make it a beautiful place, it's already beautiful in some way, but let's all pitch in. We're all responsible for our county. It's not so many people sitting on a board or some small group. We all live here. It's all our responsibility. Stop and pick it up yourself. Encourage your neighbors. I know we can do that.
Litter. I'm going to tell you one thing. May 17th come along, I'm going to start picking litter on this dick up and clean it up. Well, that's probably the hardest thing to do. You know, if you go out west or you go somewhere beautiful like this area, you would think people have responsibility to not throw things out there. We, a lot of it though, I see it's going down 28. They don't cover their truck beds and whole bags fall out. Well, there's certain things you can do. We, as Macon County, have an enforcement officer in the landfill section. They can go pick up them bags and go through there. I know they say, well, some judges throw it out. But if you make an example, I remember a long time ago, they dumping over in Buncombe County, a big dump site. They went over there and pulled everything out, went through every bag and called everybody court. You've got to start small. You've got to start with the project. Most effect we would have is this area around Franklin, the bypasses and things. We need to clean that up. That's where the people come, they visit, they see. In the sheriff department, I know they had this KP one town, I see it going up 81 through Virginia in the deep of winter. They got them shackled, they got them out there picking up trash, and they got a deputy with a shotgun. You know, so we make excuses. We've got to become responsible. We've got to come up with a plan. And we got to do it. I would start around the Franklin area, the ETJ, the county and town get together. You know, you've got to put an impression that this place is sacred to us. We live here. We want it clean. You start with that, you get people buy in, then you go out and you start spreading out in the communities. And I know there are some people that adopt highways, and they're doing a good job, but we need to help.
Richard kind of touched on it just briefly. Years ago, we used to have an inmate program in which inmates from the Macon County Jail were dispatched out with their crew, and they picked up litter throughout Macon County. That's an awesome program. They picked up the whole litter. And I don't know what the figures are at this moment. They were traumatic. They were, they were working the butts off. This is a good program that hopefully the new sheriff will look into, and we can get these folks back out there. We still have the equipment there at the sheriff's office for these inmates to go out. We still have the equipment there at the sheriff's office for these inmates to go out. There's a Ford potty that's already on them. Trailer, they have all the shuttles, they've got everything that they possibly need. So there's nothing that has to be purchased. They may need to change the tires on there for all the drivers by now. Yeah, this is something that we'll ask the new sheriff and see if we can get something to get these folks back out there. They're just sitting in jail, they're just taking up space, let's put them to work. Put them to work, then maybe when they do get out, maybe they'll get a job and start running. Thank you.
We got signs that goes up people's names all the time during daycare of the roads and everything. A lot of people does this, and it's a good program. But they're, yeah, we could probably put it on the sheriff's department's head. But how much, is it feasible now to begin to do it? Money-wise, whatever, again, having guys there operate, at least some that they have to do a study on and figure out if it was feasible for me to afford to do it and have the manpower to do it. So, it's something that you've got to look at, everything that you've got to step on to do. Yeah, we, first of all, we went out and cleaned up some property right there that was thrown on, drug heads, whatever. Then John and some others went down there and took care of it. We helped get it cleaned up. Not because we're running for county permission, because we care about what's going on in our county. And if you come to our county and see a junk home, you're going to turn around and go back and go away. So, we just took it on ourselves. John took the biggest hit, he cut three tards about that. So, that's the thing to take of just going to stuff good. You got drugs. When you got drugs, people's on drugs, they're going down the road high. What's the first thing they're going to do? They're going to throw stuff out, needles, beer cans, whatever. Yeah, we can try to run an enforcement officer to act them, but you've got a lot of area to cover in Macon County. But state is responsible when it comes to picking up the trash. And we're responsible as the people being in Macon County to call the state department and let them know, we've got a problem here, if you please help us take care of it, we want to as a community. Thank you.
As a former high school principal, trash, trash, trash. And if you leave, if you've got a good custodial staff, and they keep it clean, you know what, young people will too. So I think it's a personal responsibility for this. I think the Rotarians that I'm a member of, go out on roads, we pick up trash. Some of the schools, clubs, they go out and pick up trash. It needs to be emphasized, K through 12, but you can start in your school. If you look in your schools, visit your schools, you'll see the role models there, if the school is clean. And that can spread, not in your community. The only thing that bothers me is that trying to make people allow for this type of stuff. The court system, sometimes they don't want to mess with it, just it takes up a ballot, it takes up time and energy. So, that's where it goes back into your personal responsibility as a person. I think our city clubs, our schools, we can learn how to be role models if they are doing that. Thank you very much.
Okay, guys. I run two businesses. I volunteered 21 years of my life as a firefighter. I volunteered for Little League for 20-plus years. I was a volunteer high school baseball coach. I quit coaching high school baseball because they wanted to pay me, and I refused to take money because I volunteered to do it. It has never hurt me to get out of my vehicle, stop, pick up some trash. We're talking about taxes, taxes, taxes. Every time we get a government agency involved in something, it costs us a lot of money. Why can't we, the people, take care of our own clothes? I agree. Let's get to prisons. Don't give them, people in jail, don't give them a free ride down there, it costs a lot of money. Bring them out there, put them out there on the street. But I promise you, there are lots of youth programs too, that we need to get these, the values of our community involved in this and teach those people and teach our youth how to maintain what we have, the beauty of our county. I believe we, the people, we don't need more government. We need to become Americans again and help each other and do what's right. That's it. Who's talking about the Hotto program? Four years at the produce stand, I heard people complaining about the old title store. So I thought, okay, I'm going to go approach that lady, she could run me off, because I'm a property rights guy. But that lady started crying when I offered her. And I call this group, Neighbors Helping Neighbors. I hope Hotto community and the county commissioners will take this and run with. Because that's what we need to do. We need to help each other, pick each other up when we're down, and not condemn somebody because they need help. But Mr. Rittner, I didn't get a chance to talk about the sales tax. And I appreciate that.
I'll give you time.
Okay. Folks, that is a direct tax increase to citizens of Macon County. I don't live in Jackson County, I don't live in Twain County, I don't live in Haywood County, I don't live anywhere, I live in Macon County. As I told you before, we just put six, over $6 million in fund balance. Why do we need more money? If they can put $6 million of our money in a savings account, we don't need any more money. Until we have a capital improvement project. But my understanding, that cannot be earmarked for capital improvement. It has to go with the general fund. That came straight from the county commissioner board. I'm not here to blow smoke, I'm not here to tell you anything that I don't know is a fact. I believe that you, the people, me sitting on that board, deserve an honest, open government. Sitting on that board, you're not ever going to have to question what is right or what is wrong. Because you will be told completely. You will not be told part of the truth. One more thing that I didn't get to touch on. We have always been told that we have the lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina or the next to the lowest. Folks, I will challenge you. Per capita, we have one of the highest. And all you've got to do is you take the $58 million budget, and you take the citizens of Macon County, your population, and you divide that $58 million by your population, and it'll tell you every woman, child, and man in this county, what you paid per person. It's real simple math. I hope that somebody can tell me differently, but my math tells me that's how you do per capita. And if you will go across the board, you will understand whether we have the lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina. Thank you.
My next question was also repetitive, so it was more about sales tax, property tax. Pass that one. Macon County has seen record growth since the pandemic in terms of property sales, which means that our little county is experiencing substantial growth over a short period of time. When most of our county services and departments are already stretched thin, doing more with less, what can the commissioners do over the next five years to best manage the county's growth? Mr. Lightner, if you're poised to start off for us.
First of all, you're talking about growth, the population, or what kind of growth?
Well, we did, we've had record home sales and record...
So we're going, how are we going to slow that down?
Not slow it down, but how are we going to manage it?
Well, first off, I want to correct something John said there about taxes. In the state of North Carolina, you can perk out by anything. In the taxes, yes, you can pull up that tar catch, we have X regimen that go by the people that live in Macon County all the time. However, there's a little thing about 40 to 50% of our homes are owned by out-of-towners. So if you take 2.1% of people per house times that, our population goes up to about 75,000. And when you do that, the per capita goes way down. To give you an example, Dare County on the coast, same way. You can also pull over landfill where they say, we are the best recycling county in the West alone, because they use the same 36,000 people. They don't count transit or anybody else. So statistics, you can make anything. So if we're going to talk about growth or anything else, let's be on an apple-for-apple basis. Now, on this growth that we're talking about, if, I've got a degree in finance and economics, if you want to know why, I can talk about some of these things. You want to talk about that? I think the US government took care of growth in the near future. When they raised the interest rates so high, the inflation is taking over, the house market is getting way out of here, $380,000 for a small house, interest rates high, we're going to see it bust back. So it's going to become more manageable. The problem we're going to have is, what are we going to do with the people that now are stuck in places with no affordable housing? That's the question, affordable housing. We need to start looking for properties, surplus properties that county owns or other people, and start, you know, helping the people that cannot afford the $700 to $1,500 a month rent, and they got a little child or something. We need to look at Habitat for Humanity, find a piece of public. The old county garage would have been a perfect place to put in about 15 complex units for low income. We don't look, we need to plan, we need to look, because income and private investment is one thing. But what we are seeing, we can't provide housing in our county for people who live on modest income. That's where the growth is going to have to be shifted. When you have, have your property owned by out-of-towners, they got more money accessible and they pay a higher price. It's been like that for, since it started back in 1975 in this county, and it's continued to now. So it's not going to be a problem we can solve overnight.
Yes. Macon County has seen record growth since the pandemic in terms of property sales, which means that our little county has experienced substantial growth over a short period of time. When most of the county services and departments are already doing more with less, what can the commissioners do over the next five years to best manage the county's growth?
Folks, I've got to tell you, we have got the best volunteers and county employees in Arnhem. I've worked with these folks, EMS, dispatchers, we've got law enforcement, these best group of people that you could ever have. We have to be able to continue to have a competitive wage for these folks to keep it here. No longer, we nearly lost a lot of folks in our service industry because of the pay rates. When the commissioners pass the pay rates for the county employees, they kept a lot of the folks here, our teachers, again, they're some of the best teachers in the town. So, we have to be able to support their services. Yes, growth is there, getting their needs, they can take care of this property.
I've talked to some real estate friends of mine and talked about this stuff personally. There's not a lot of land, you've got to have, if you want to do inside housing, you've got to have land where it's accessible to sewer and water. We can build this mobile house income, or you can start building townhouses. That's what the big structure of people being able to come here and work and be able to afford to buy into housing. And the only way you can do it is go up, build up and build townhouses and sell them off. You've got land here all the way to Kelly to these subdivision. And the people's willing to sell, willing to get rid of because they're set with it, being fantastic some of it. But they own so many lots, they, they're not going to build, they've reached age in their life, but they're done. You can, we can look at, into that as a county, but we need a plant, a five-year plant, come in here, see where this stuff is, how can we build or find a place at the county's guy or around town and see if you can get somebody to come in and build these houses? Because it takes money to put these structures up. If you get somebody, an investor, to come in here and do this, then that could probably take care of a lot of problems. Yes, rent's high, I can tell you that, I've got five rentals. We've got low, we keep our luck so people can afford it. But mobile homes right now is running from $700 to $1,200, and most of it's $700 is a junk home. So, I know about what's going on. I've got, I've done work for people to move from California. They buy, they built $350,000 houses, of what they sold the little house out there for, $750,000, $800,000. Thank you.
As your county commissioner now, sitting there, we hear a lot of suggestions on people wanting to develop property. We take that information. We have a planning board, John, you've served on a planning board. It's not the county commissioners doing the planning. We take the question, what are the problem, we take it to the planning board, and the planning board researches the question. Then they come back with us with some suggestions. Where will you go around here? You've got an infrastructure problem. We're talking about managing county growth, with the price of renting property right now in houses, it'll manage itself, people will leave. I've got two young married people in my home, and I have two houses. They're living in one of them because they couldn't find a place to rent, they couldn't afford to buy. So, it processes itself out. But we do have a planning board that researches things like this. We do have a development going up at this time. Don't know all the particulars about it. There is, I'm apprehensive about saying mobile, but it is a mobile thing, but it's a lot of people or a lot of communities there.
Excuse me, sorry. Sorry, he blessed me because I sneezed, sorry.
Oh, he blessed me. Anyway, we do have a planning board. If problems come to the commissioner, we direct it toward the planning board, and they do a super job. We've got subdivisions, we've got a lot of different things here that the planning board works with. I said John's been on that. I've been on it one time. It's, it's, it's a work of progress. Thank you.
God, man, I'll read that question one more time.
I'm going to start charging you guys. Macon County has seen record growth since the pandemic in terms of property sales, which means that our little county has experienced substantial growth over a short period of time. When most of our county services are already doing more with less, what can commissioners do over the next five years to best manage the county's growth? what can commissioners do over the next five years to best manage the county's growth?
Well, folks, one thing you better have on your mind is the new reval that's coming up next year. We have, to my understanding, eight billion dollar land values in Macon County. It's already projected to be eleven point three billion. That's a thirty-three percent increase in land value. So we better be thinking about that. But in the next five years, as a county commissioner, I mean, we don't own water, we don't own sewer, we don't own roads. I don't know how we're going to manage to grow services and everything to meet these needs. But if, as a conservative person, I will tell you, if you don't put a conservative-minded person on this board, this will be used as a direct tax increase on citizens in Macon County. Don't fall for revenue neutral. Because the last time I was promoted revenue neutral on my taxes, the next tax bill, I got billed for nineteen hundred dollars more. And then I paid the money for it, that's not revenue neutral. I'm a conservative person, folks. I will work with any one of these guys for the better of the citizens in Macon County and my county. Whatever you folks tell us, I'm not going to go outside of New York to get a study done for Macon County. We have folks right here in this county, I've had several of them while I'm out here campaigning. Grant writers, professionals, willing to give their services, no charge to the county. How do we roll with somebody from Florida, Georgia, wherever, to tell us what we need in Macon County? The citizens here, we know what we need in Macon County, let's work together. We live in one of the most beautiful places on earth. I've been to a lot of places, a lot of different countries. It's always great to come home. We can take care of this, let's work together and move Macon County forward.
I, I'm glad for growth, this is my hometown. I want to keep it small. I don't want a city here by any means, it's the reason I love it. But growth is coming to us. You look around, if you've taken any attention, if you've lived here for any number of years, growth is coming. So we should welcome it, but we need to have a plan on how to control it, just how you manage it. Well, there's no place to live. My wife and I recently bought a house and we were fortunate, found a nice house for a decent price and we were fortunate. But I hear that all the time, can't live, can't live. So one idea is maybe approach, it's a proactive thing, you know? Don't sit on your backside and think the answer's going to come to you. Go find it, go stir the pot. Why do we approach, maybe rezoning some piece of land? If it's a single family dwelling that it's zoning for, try to get it to multifamily. We can add a few of those and give more people options to live here. But the plan is have a plan. You can't do anything just snap your fingers. It does take time, but don't sit on it. There's been things that have been sat off for years. We can talk about our school, other things, jails. Let's all sit on this. Because it's here now, if we sit, it's going to be the same problem we have with some of these other capital needs. And we're going to be looking at it and going, boy, we should have done that now, what have we been doing? Mr. Shields is right, they'll take care of themselves and people will leave. And I've always said more than once, I've had people here that are close to me. Two of my sons don't live here and breaks my heart. I've got a granddaughter, seven years old, living in Arizona that I'll never see because he can't make a living here, he can't live here. So let's make a plan and then let's take action and let's make it happen for our citizens in our county. Thank you.
So in the interest of time, because it is seven thirty, another question, and then we're going to do our closing remarks. If you've answered a question, then we'll do closing remarks. I do want to note that the library, if you haven't noticed, the lights turned off earlier, is closed. And they are so gracious to let us use this space even after closing hours. And just keep in mind, gentlemen, if elected to the board, the library is one of the beautiful facilities that are funded through county taxpayer dollars. So remember how gracious they are to let us use that space when you're thinking about library funding in your future. So, prior to asking the questions, we were, I was trying to get an exact timeline. I think Senator Corbin and I went back to at least his tenure in politics, which was before I was born. So it's been the last thirty years, so we can date back to Auburn in the late eighties. So we'll take, it's probably pretty safe to say, at least since the seventies, when we're talking about this, that it's been, for the first time in maybe since the seventies, or ever in county history, I need to research this further. But with the current election, that it's potential that, for the first time ever, that District One, which is the Highlands District, that that representative isn't going to be physically residing in Highlands, which at least is the seventies. But maybe in our county's history, has never happened before. Which is perfectly okay because that district represents, like we said earlier, Highlands, LJ, Flats, Sugar Fork. So they don't have to live in Highlands. However, in our county's history, they have. Especially with Highlands making up the majority of our property tax bases, where over half of the county's property tax base comes from is Highlands. And a lot of those residents feel like they might be losing a representative. So as a board, how can, or as a representative, whether it's District One or District Two, how could you go about ensuring that those folks receive the same representation as if the candidate lives within the city limits? Because it will be something brand new in terms of our county commissioners. Sure, well, you're supposed to go first. Mr. Willis is going first. If it wasn't somebody that you were going against in your district.
Well, no, he could go, I mean, I just have, I have.
How about this, because you guys are back to back and then you have to leave, let me ask Mr. Willis to go first, then he can go right after. Just to keep it, since you guys are in the same seat, we'll do it that way. And then we'll let the other gentleman go.
Okay, I'm running in District One, which is, you know, it entails Sugar Fork, LJ, Highlands, Flats, Scaly Mountain. The citizens of Highlands can rest assured, they're going to get the same representation from me that I'll give the folks over in Anaheim, Franklin, Cowie, it doesn't matter. We're all one, we're one county folks. So we need to represent all the people in Macon County, not just a slim majority in our, just the town of Highlands. Excuse me.
There you go, yep.
Thank you.
And if you want, since you do have to go, if you want to do it, you're closing, go right ahead and do that.
Okay, guys, this is a great question for me, because I've been in Highlands since nineteen eighty-six. My wife is a native Highlander. The Mungler family was the third family that ever settled in Highlands. So I met my sweetheart in nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-six. She, Lila and I got married, we built our house in Highlands. We have three sons, they graduated Highland School. I'm a retired Highlands firefighter, Highlands Little League representative. I was a recipient of a Highland School Citizens Award voted on by faculty and staff. I'm there every day, that's where my landscaping company is. My connections are extensive in Highlands, North Carolina. And those people know where I'll be every day. Folks, I bought my house in Sugar Fork, it was my dream home. For my retirement, for my kids. So that's why I live in Sugar Fork. Just about every day I've been in Highlands. Those people know what I stand for. Those people know that I will fight, I will represent them, Scaly Mountain, Sugar Fork, LJ, Anaheim, Franklin, Otto, as a one. I will work hard for the citizens of Macon County. As I said before, this is my home. And I will continue to be my home. Somebody else mentioned something about their kids that are not here. My three sons, my youngest son's in Western Carolina, right now, third year, finishing up third year college. My oldest son graduated from Western Carolina, he's here, he's a North Carolina contractor. My middle son's on the East Coast in law enforcement. It breaks my heart too, he hasn't often been to come home.
That was your two minutes.
Okay. Folks, anyways, I'm John Sherrill, your conservative-minded business owner, candidate for Macon County, District One, Boards of Commissioners. I humbly ask for your support in your vote. And when elected to the Boards of Commissioners, I will not let you down. And you will have hope and honesty. And I will be, you will be able to get in touch with me. Thank you, thank you greatly. Thank you for Macon County Library, thank you folks for attending and listening to my board and stuff. But thank you, and one vote at a time. Thank you.
Greg, Mr. Jones, stay with the order we were going in.
As the other county said, I will represent all communities in Macon County. No matter frustrations from Anaheim, Highlands, wherever, wherever. I'm willing to put my votes on, we have to do projects and help get stuff done, I'm willing to do it. If we, I'd like the city communities to come together and work together. Since it's called, I've seen a lot of communities that split, churches has not come back together. It's time to get people talking to each other again. So people talking to each other, they know what's going on in the world, knows what's going in the county and everything. We need to be neighbors, we need to be community leaders, helping each other. Getting back in the community buildings and doing projects, doing volunteer stuff, helping each other. It's a family, Macon County is a family. I've been here all my life and I watch people stretch from wherever. I want to see that come back to Macon County. We deserve it, we need it. We don't need to split, we need to come together and see what's going on from all the communities and be transparent and help each other. As a full county, I think we can help each other, lead Macon County to the future and be a better county to live in. Because I feel a lot of people, y'all wouldn't be here if y'all didn't care, all of us. I know y'all care because you come to see what's going to represent your county, what you want to put in there. And I want to be, I'd love to be one of the guys that goes in there to make sure that I'll be available and be able to handle your problems so we can move forward. Thank you.
We have three districts in Macon County, District One, Two, and Three. And I have always believed myself as a, they call me first. Districts, to me, have responsibility to find the ones they want, who they want, come up and be part of this. Jim Tate, he's out on the, he was our previous chairman for maybe twelve years. And he chose to not run this year. But I still think responsibility for a quality candidate needs to come out of District One. By the leadership of District One, they're the ones that's going to have to, the District One person is going to have to answer to District One people. Very seldom, Gary Shields, go to Highlands and answer questions about the District One. They're representative, that's who they need to get. And my understanding is, you've got two quality candidates here, you may have another one that's fought out of the other parties. But anyway, but anyway, what I'm trying to say is that District One, in my opinion, is responsible for getting their own candidate to represent them. On the District Two, again, I appreciate your vote and I'll keep the vote running.
On my, here on handout, some of you have it printed tonight, on the front bottom it says, be there for all sexes. Yeah, we're elected by our districts because of where we live. But we are responsible to all the citizens of our county. May not be able to get ahold of whoever that one representative is, or they may see us out of bounds. And while we may not be the responsible person, we have to be there for everybody. I have a long history of connections to Highlands through work. I've been very involved in our community through youth sports, by coaching them, running some leagues, umpiring, refereeing. And that involves kids from all the county. Worked up there, as a landscaper, been twenty years of my life has been up on that mountain. Actually have a small stint in the post office up there, got to know a lot of people in Highlands. And we have got to be there for everybody. Talk about Anaheim, you know, Paul Higgin is the current board member, he's in District Three member over there. Have one meeting over there, I'm going to have another one next week with those folks. Because they know I'm running for District Two, but you're District Three, folks, but we're here for all of them. So I'm making an appointment to go see them, and I've had three or four events up in Highlands because they need to know the same thing. We have got to be here for everybody and do our best for everybody. Yes, we're responsible for our district and that, we're going to get, the majority of our work is going to be for those people. Because that's where we're elected and that's what we represent. But we have to be in mind, we're here for everybody. Serve them all.
You know, I look, you know, I get along with everyone up here, John Sherrill and Danny Anclon's not here. However, if everyone here, everyone's not here tonight, I am the only one that answers to every district in the county. Mr. Shields, he's a commissioner, but if you listen to what he just said, he said, you know, whoever District One rep is, want to answer those questions. When I was in the tax office, there is no districts. Most of my questions came from the town of Highlands and Highlands District. And then Anaheim was a big question around the lake. So I didn't have the privilege of saying district. And that's the way your commissioners operate. You have five commissioners, they're elected in district. Once you're elected, you represent the people of Macon County. You represent their needs, you represent what they want, and you try to fulfill it. Right now, I know that Highlands School, they need a K four, there is no reason, they should not have a K four, pre-K, I mean, whatever it is for year olds, they need that. So that's not just Highlands' problem, that's our problem as leaders. As leaders, we treat you as a person, as a customer, as a client. We need to make that business model, not because you live somewhere or because you're from this family or because you live on the wrong side of the track. You are important to us, we need to listen, we need to solve your problems. So when it comes to, are we going to treat Highlands different? No, they're very much the solution to many of our problems. But Highlands and Franklin carries the tax burden, period. They, those two areas has about eight percent of the tax dollars. But we got to reach Manhattan, Smith Ridge, anywhere else. So your citizens, that should not be a problem, thank you.
Well, what I'm going to do, Don, is I'm going to start with Gary. And we'll go backwards in reverse order since I didn't, because I know it got kind of confused with John having to leave early. So if you have any other like closing remarks or any last things that you want to say, and as Mark Wilson Scott said, short. So just to switch it up and give everybody a different order, we'll start with Gary, then go back down the line just to give your final remarks, everybody has one more chance to kind of address. And then we will close out for the next. will close out for the night.
When I first became county commissioner, I did not understand the word liaison. I understand it now. Each county commissioner has a liaison to different programs within the county. That is the glue that keeps you in the know of what's going on in different counties. Right now, I serve on nine, a liaison to nine different organizations. Six of those organizations, well, don't pertain to school, but it's all about facilities, it's about, whether it's about juvenile crime prevention, but there's nine different ones that I serve on. But also, within that, there's six that I serve on that is not on this list, like Kids' Place, is one of our rescue places. You look at Southwestern Development Board, Broadband Community, Southwestern Community College Trustee, Board of Trustees, we have a number of here of things where we stay involved in the community. To me, that's where the information comes to you, being involved in the community. So, I think the liaisons that we have, you got, I'll just say some of the names, Jim Ronnie Bill, he's on 10 liaisons, I'm on nine plus six. Mr. Tate, who's a former chairman from Highlands, he's on six. Mr. Higgins is on seven, Mr. Young's on seven. These are liaisons that we have within the community that keeps us informed of what's going on in the community. We have the responsibility to come back to the board to explain what the needs are within that community. So, it's a working board.
I want to be your leader, I want to be your voice, and I want y'all's voice to be heard in everything we do. My ideal of being the county commissioner is to work with everyone in Macon County. My other ideal, go get stuff, bring it here, get people that can help us. I talked to our Speaker of the House, of our House of Representatives, just the other day, a meeting. We had a good discussion, he said, if you make county commissioner, anything Macon County's needs, call them. Jim Ford and them, they're all to get, willing to help the rural areas. The Speaker of the House has been here in West Virginia, Carolina, I've been seeing 10 times. That's more than any of the Speaker of the House meeting. I might be your leader, but you're the voice. You're the ones I work for. Everybody I work for. You got a problem, my phone, my phone number will be available to everyone. Call them, ask me questions. You got a problem, let me see if I can have you getting taken care of. If I can't take care of it, I'm sure I can get to answer some or get the problem taken care of. I'm just a home regular country boy, naive of Macon County, been here 47, all my life. And I believe in our county, I believe our people, in everyone. I believe we can grow together, I believe we can grow to the future. And I promise, if you put me in, you'll have your voice and you'll be able to speak your voice and I will represent your voice. I want y'all to be back, come back as part of the voice to what goes on in our leadership and be transparent so everybody knows what's going on. Greg Jones, I'd love to have you vote for District Two. Thank you, thank you all for coming, and thank you guys for waiting for us at the library.
Folks, whoever you pick as your next county commissioner is going to have a full plate. There are a lot of capital projects that are coming up. We're going to need your help, we're going to need your support. Be transparent in what we do and how we do it. This I pledge to you. I've been very, very fortunate and very blessed to have been able to serve and protect the citizens of Macon County for over 30 years. It's been a while. I've been through almost every county building and facility in Macon County, I've either done a fire inspection at that facility or a building, or I've done a security assessment. I know the needs of Macon County. I have the leadership, I have the knowledge that I can pass along to my fellow commissioners. Again, although I'm running in District One, I represent all of Macon County because I've done so my entire career. Being retired, I'll be your full-time county commissioner. I'll be available to you 24/7. I've done that my entire career. I've taken calls in the middle of the night when I wasn't detected. So, getting a call from the public is nothing new to me. I'll be there when you need me. It'll be my honor and privilege to be your next District One County Commissioner. I humbly ask for your vote. Hope Don Mullis, thank you and God bless him.
Folks, you heard a lot of information tonight and of the forums and things we've had. This has probably been the best where we actually got to answer questions.
Thanks.
That means thanks. I really appreciate all the candidates, everybody's come out to try and make Macon County better, and that's what we want to do. To give you an idea, what I believe is my six E's. Excellence in education, enforcement, working with law enforcement to provide their needs, elderly, provide their needs and check for their services. Economic development, that's a lifeline, paying for these things we're talking about. In vision and open government where you can get the information before we make decisions, where we take your feedback and we take it to heart. And enlighten the citizen with information before we vote on things. Visions today will become dreams tomorrow in reality and future. We have to have the vision, we have to have the dreams to get reality. I think that's what it's been like, and we've not had enough planning in taking the bull by the horns and going after it. To give you a little bit, I solve problems. From day one, I can go in, look at the budget, I've seen 35 of them, I've worked with every county manager except the first one, worked with the Democrats and Republicans, five Democrats harried me, I worked with five Republicans and everything in between. I had the best tax office in the state two years of my term, best tax assessor in the state, I was president of the Tax Association of the state, and I got an order of a long leaf pine from the governor. I'm here to solve problems, I don't hesitate, and you won't see things tabled and never talked about again. I'm Richard Lawson.
Not much of a podium guy, but I did it for the questions, I'm going to stand out here or not, that's all right. Brittany and Nick, thank you for you.
Why does he get recognition?
Well, because he's supporting you. So, she, all right, I've supported us and I appreciate you setting her up.
He's my better half.
And Library, thank you for having us. Folks, thanks for coming tonight. Says a lot that you come out here and you're interested in our county. Thank you, thank you guys, when you get a chance. It is a task to run for office, and it says they want to be here, they want to help our county by, and hang in and put their names out there. You get a chance, thank them for that. I have been blessed in my life to be put in leadership in the bills. Problem solved, Richard just talked about that. They have seen me before and hey, put your hands on it, and it gets fixed, it gets moved, we go forward. And I'm blessed with that, I'm thankful that God trusted me that way and said, here's a skill, take advantage of it, and I have it in my life. So, doesn't matter what the problem is to me, break it. And we will break it down, we'll assess it, see what it is, we'll discuss it, we'll talk, have input from, I think we should do surveys. I think we should do surveys when we're campaigning and say, what are your folks about? Here's something to hear about. What do you think about? And get feedback from y'all. Transparent, you hear transparent from all candidates because we should be. But it needs to happen if you put an action in. You talk about things, put them into action, make it happen. Our kids, my kids go through here, I go over here, I've got grandkids coming, we've got to take care of our kids. Not enough things here for them to do. You leave them idle and they're going to possibly choose on things, and you can deal with them later down the road in jails and drug and things like that. So, let's invest in our kids. The school, capital needs, those things I've already discussed, you'll hear about them over and over, their needs. But we have to invest in our kids, not just a school. We need a school, don't get me wrong, but we got to invest in our kids. And we got to continue to make sure that we give you all the services that you need and want, and make sure we do it and be fair with your tax dollars and show it to you, black and white. Daniel Wrightmeyer, District Two, I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
And again, thank you guys for coming out. Early voting continues until May 14 at 3 o'clock, which is a Saturday, and then the primary will be held on Tuesday, May 17. Thank you all, have a great day.